It's not put in the water, it's actually drilled underneath the river.
So I just gave you an example of my experience within being Energy Transfer. Most of my experience until I moved up here two years ago for this job involved pipeline installations in the south. I did do work in New York, Minnesota, Wisconsin, Illinois. I mean, I've been around, I've dealt with rock before, Wyoming, Montana. But as far as Pennsylvania, it's apples. Other than Joe and it's been done for Sunoco previously. And I believe Williams and a couple other people had done them. Those would be the local companies who have done, we call them tunnel pulls.
Okay. And then just one final question. I know there were some concerns raised earlier by Caroline as far as the amount of time. You're saying 36 hours, even say four or five days. If your confidence level is that high, and this is a combined question to the town and also the township, would you consider some type of a penalty, let's say over five days? Would Sun be willing to pay $50,000 a day for every day over five days as an incentive to make sure, you know, five days doesn't turn into, you know, 55 days or 110 days?
Yeah, I understand where you're going. And two parts of the short answer at this point are what we're offering. I tried to lay out what it is in terms of per day. You know.
Why not say to the residents, I'm saying even back to the township, would you be receptive to a penalty for over, you know, a reasonable amount of time? If that's what your information says, that you didn't take more than five days, but guaranteed we have this, I'm not gonna take 105 days.
Yeah, I think, no, I don't think we would entertain that. But obviously, from a township perspective, you know, if something drug along, they certainly, you know, are still the township and have the ability to, I'm not gonna speak for them, but change decision and go in a different direction. The one thing I'll say in terms of putting in context is so for Mariners 2, we've had 195, I think it's 195 of these HDDs that have been completed. Nearly all of them have been done with 24/7 and, you know, done within the timeframe that we laid out. The one that was referenced in Milltown is a significant kind of exception to the rule.
Okay, well, then finally, I would say, even if you wouldn't consider it, I would request that the township would reconsider that as a request. Maybe not the penalty factor, but I certainly think the residents would have much more of a comfort level if we felt there was some skin in the game for the amount of time that they would be allowed to really disrupt the community. Thank you.
Maybe it'll help you out if I clarify something for everybody here, okay? We're hot, we have a lot of confidence that we can do these pulls during regular business hours, limited by the audience. That's, you know, we're perfectly willing to take that on. What this proposal is about is management of risk. And what we're doing is telling the public that the risk level to pulling the pipe skin is reduced as long, when we do it continuously. And we don't do it continuously. If y'all have all seen the pipe out there, you know it's in pieces, okay? So we pull a piece of pipe into the ground, the next piece has to be welded, it has to be x-rayed, it has to go through x-ray inspection, it has to be coated. And then this next piece can be pulled into the ground. Well, that process just repeats and repeats and repeats until the entire pipeline segment's pulled into place. So there is a downtime, okay? Every time we have to connect the next segment, we've got it welded up, it's got to get tested, it's got to get passed inspection, it's got to get coated so that it can get pulled into the hole. If we shut down at night, okay, then we're only doing that work during the daytime. So, you know, realistically, the hole, the way I describe it is the hole sits there dead for 10 or 12 hours. Okay? We would like to think nothing would happen, okay? And we could pick it up the next day, and we have picked it up the next day and started it all over again. If something happens underground, you know, that's out of our control, I mean, you stop. I mean, Murphy's Law, Murphy's Law, whatever you wanna call it, okay? If it sits there for 10 hours, and there's another component to this, and something happens underground that we're not aware of, and then all of a sudden, we're ready to move the pipe, we put pressure on it, and we can't break it loose. I mean, we have, what we'll do is we'll add equipment and we'll see if we can break it loose. We will go as far as we will pull on that pipe until we damage the pipe and pull it back, trying to get it back out of the ground so that we can replace that piece with new pipe to try to do it all over again. If we have to work with a little laxity, we'll do whatever we can to try to make it successful. So to us, the request is managing the risk. When we don't let that hole sit there, when we don't let the pipe stay and sit in the hole unworked on for an extended period of time, it reduces the risk that we won't be able to get that pipe moved again when we want to move it again. And especially it becomes important when you think about some of these things, 7,000 foot long, that's a, you know, that's a lot of steel in the ground, sitting there not moving for an overnight period. And it can frankly, it can, we overread the hole, we make the hole larger than the pipe so it's got free space to move in there. But, you know, what can you say, stuff happens. And if it happens, we will do our damnedest to try to get that pipe back out of the ground. But if we can't get the pipe back out of the hole, even to the point where we break it off underground, then we're gonna have to re-drill the hole. So it's, we're telling the public, look, we're asking for this so that if the worst case happens, we're trying to manage that worst case, hopefully we don't have to re-drill a hole. And so that we don't sit here, continue to disturb your neighborhood, your yards, your backyards, all over again, trying to put the pipe in there. That's really what it's about.
All right, I'm not sure which way to stand and who to address, to be honest with you. My name is Everhorn, and I live at 544 Bowman Circle. I'm right next to drill 521. And I'm the lucky guy that has, you know, in my backyard, a mud machine, two huge diesel engines that goes on and on and on. Also the lucky guy that had this whole house vibration over the last four months that the township has tired of hearing from me, and Rick Smith from Energy Transfer has tired of hearing from me. So, um, so I'm here to ask our supervisors not, and I'm beseeching you, not to approve the 24x7. We have suffered enough over the last four months, in turn, well, it's really two and a half years, but over the last four months where our house have literally shaken. So, um, so one of the things, there are three reasons, again, that I wanted you to understand why. There's a lot of reasons, but three in particular. First of all, is the inconvenience to me, my family, and my neighbors. The use of heavy equipment back there, the cranes, the use of back, big machines that are backing up, that are deep in, all those kinds of things, the lights, the welding, the noise to people, it's, uh, which will be unbearable. And, and I have no intention of living in a hotel like I have done before in the last four months to move out of my house. So I'm asking again, I'm asking you not to approve this. All right, um, another thing is trust. Sunoco, in my opinion, cannot be trusted. And case in point, and I believe Carol brought up some recent points earlier. You know, they came into our house in 2015 and said, oh, you wanna know where here? We're gonna lay a couple pipes, you'll see some pipes laying out there, and that's about it. Little did I know, two and a half years later, we're standing here asking you not to do 24x7. And my, and my backyard, which I honestly do not use my deck anymore because of the visibility and Sunoco, so I'm, but in that case, I'm still prepared to weather the storm for the five or six days, or I don't care if it takes another year. What's another year? I mean, you already ruined my life for two, uh, for two and a half years. So another year won't kill me, okay? Five days won't kill me. So I'm asking again that you don't do this. My third point is that, um, once you start doing this, I believe the only, the only tool you have in your toolkit to manage Sunoco is your ordinance. And in my, in my opinion, once you start opening the floodgates, there's Adelphia who's gonna come and ask for 24x7, there are other pipelines, all the other pipelines that we have here is gonna come and ask for, for, um, for exceptions. I'm asking you, please, don't do it. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Mary Bussamli, we live in Hershey, Snow. That's my daughter in the wheelchair over there. I just wanna mention that people in the autism spectrum, noise is physically painful to them. And so there's been nothing said about the decibels. Nothing said about the pitch of the noise because high pitch noise travels further than low pitch noise. So I would like to know what kind of noise we're talking about. I, I can't make a judgment unless I know, you know, what kind of levels we're talking about. And, um, the other thing, which I don't know if you're gonna answer tonight or have to put off, but, um, the hotel issue, it's, this population is used to a certain schedule and, you know, pulling off into the hotel, it's, any kind of things that are very different, it's, it's very difficult. I would just say that, so. Are you able to answer that decibel now?
So the first part in terms of the decibel piece, I'll, I'll let these guys answer. But obviously, like I mentioned during the presentation, folks, yours is a unique situation. Everybody has, has various, you know, differences in terms of, you know, of issues that they deal with. So that's one of the things I mentioned, while we have folks from right away here as well. And we'll start, we're gonna answer your question in terms of the noise piece, but to help in terms of answer specific questions that you may have, this will need your household as well to try to find the appropriate accommodation for that. So with that, I don't know, Ron or Larry, if you wanna just kinda describe the equipment and things that are going on through a pullback, whether it's day or night, it'll be similar. But I'll let these guys talk about that.
The decibel output for the drilling, the drilling rate is approximately 110 dB A at five foot. A track up runs at 90, 91 dB A, same thing at five to 10 foot for the unit when it's under operations. Side boom, I, don't hesitate to ask me what, if you don't know what the piece of equipment is. The side boom, which is the, it kinda looks like a bulldozer, but it has an arm inside to fix the pipe up. Okay, we call those side booms. They run about 89 dB A at five foot. How close do you live to the actual workspace itself?
We're on Yard 80 Drive, so we're very close to the fire station.
A hundred foot, 150 foot, or?
That's a weakness of mine, I don't estimate distance very well. But when you see the fire station and then you look across the way and you see the sign that says Hershey, Snow, we're there, right over that wall.
Okay, so probably with the decibel follow, you're probably.
300 feet, you say?
I'm sorry?
About 300 feet, you say?
Oh, about 300 foot. Is it open space or wooded or? Folks, I mean, I'm not trying, I'm trying to answer the lady's question, okay? And I don't know where she lives.
Okay.
And I'll let y'all know, I've actually gone out to people's houses and worked directly with them to answer questions for, that she might have like that. I mean, so, you know, I understand y'all find it humorous, but understand that I work, I work all over the United States, and I can't memorize every job in everybody's house. And I'm just trying to, I'm trying to give her an accurate answer, okay?
Well, there is a fence, but it's an open fence, it's, so part of.
Cycle fence or something?
Well, no.
Let me give it to you, without no trees or anything, no buffering or anything like that, probably combined noise level at 300 foot, you're gonna be in the high 90s, low 80s.
Okay, and what kind of pitch? Is it a really high, like, yay, 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 in a really high line, or is it a low?
Well, there's audible noises in there, like you asked, like you alluded to, there's inaudible noise that adds other effects, your, your high frequency, your audible noise is gonna be in the high 70s, low 80s. Your inaudible high frequency, mostly that's gonna come from driving with, not necessarily from, that would be like the equipment that's moving, where the tracks grind on each other. You're probably gonna be in the mid 80s.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, good evening, my name is Nick Batista, 1428 Baker Ridge. So there's a work site you have, I don't know what you're particularly calling it here, that's just east of the shopping center. And for the 16 inch pipe, you had two HDDs there. I don't know if you changed your numbers or what you've done.
Behind the right of the area?
I'm right behind the right of the area.
Yeah, so that's on the map, just for orientation, that's kinda the Carriage Drive area.
Okay, but on the 16 inch, you had two drills, two mud machines, two everything's. And you drilled continually for about nine months, okay? I also became best friends with Rick, I'd call him every morning from bed, my bed would vibrate. Morning, wanna put quarters, give me quarters, well, I'm laying my bed so it's shaped in the morning. My windows rattle, my plasterboard cracked, okay? We've had Sunoco over there several times, we got nothing, we got no town station, we got nothing. Okay, and that was a long operation. So if I understand you correctly now, you moved one of the HDDs out of that area?
No, what I was saying is that one is complete. So we're, like, if everybody, if they're looking at that map where it says Carriage Drive HDD 461, it says 20 inch.
Yes.
So the one 16 inch drill is already done.
I know that, I'm asking for the 20 inch drill, you're gonna have two drills in the same location.
You mean, are you saying two drills at the same time?
Well.
No, yeah, I guess the short answer is no. And Ron, if you wanna jump in, because we're, we just have the one pipe left. But anything else you want to add?
Well, you got 461, 471 that they drill from the site that you're not guaranteed.
So they won't be both in the same site?
It's still the same site, whether or not the contractor, based on their sequencing and schedule, decides to do it at the same time is, that's one thing that we need to determine.
So still undetermined, we went through nine months of hell. Okay? It started out with shower curtains there, very close to it, and that's all that was there. The supervisors came over my house several times, Sunoco was there several times. We did 90 decibels on my porch and also in my kitchen. That's not bearable to look forward to again. I know you put up new walls now, I don't know if they work enough, but you just started working there today. Is there any assurance that you can give us that we won't have to live through that again? Any promise that you won't do two drills at the same time at that work site?
I mean, I think what Ron is saying is in terms of the two, these two drills that are the 20 inch, it's not determined yet in terms of, of what the start date is on that, there's variables. But, you know, in terms of the key part, what we're talking about with 24/7, you know, from a pullback perspective, you know, the, you know, the noise and similarity would be, you know, of what the pullback is.
I didn't get to the pullback there, I'm talking about the drilling itself, okay? That's what's unbearable. When it comes to the pullback, you did both pullbacks from behind that, from that site to Wellington, and from that site down to the business park with that 24 hour pullback. You still have the same clears on the 20 inch pipe that you have on the 16 inch pipe. And I can't see any reason that it would be necessary to work 24 hours a day for the pigeons of compensation you're talking about. And I implore the supervisors not to allow a 24 hour drill. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tony Beretta, I live in Coltry, 1601 Bainway. I've been listening to a lot these past four years, as well as tonight. So I have a few questions. HDD 471, now the 16 inch has already been installed and pulled, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Could you tell us how long that took? Can you give us a little synopsis of how that went?
I don't recall how long that took, I had doubts about that.
Two days, three days, 12 hours.
I want to pull back.
Yeah.
Yeah, again, I don't have those.
Okay. Well, let me tell you, it took you more than one day to do it because as I drove by on separate days, I could still hang in the air. So, that being the case, you had to halt your operations overnight, then come back and continue the following day. What were your concerns about stopping and then continuing the following day? And then, if I'm not mistaken, happened earlier part of this year?
Sorry, what's, what's the question?
Excuse me, you said, what's the question?
Yes.
I'm asking you the question as what, what are your concerns on that pull, having to stop overnight? And we didn't get any, any of this relative to that pull?
Yeah, as mentioned.
You explained that to us, why didn't have a concern?
As mentioned earlier, we're here to, to inform you that we want to mitigate the risk associated with non-continuous pullback.
Right, right, well, that was a non-continuous pullback. So you didn't have concerns then?
Well.
Or you did have concerns?
So this, this, each drill that you make drill, this is, although it's still the same location, it's a different type of profile. And with each, each profile, there's a different, there's a different risk.
So it's always on your favorite, it's always gonna be slim to what's best for you. I think that's the first thing, that's the first thing. So I think everyone knows what I'm trying to drive at there, okay? So let's go to some of your documents you had up here. Oh, so in several of these, it's undetermined because the EP haven't given their responses. So what is the DEP telling you when you could expect a response? Or you're working in the dark, you've got no idea when you'll get a response?
So the two that you specified, the HDD 471, which is one you've asked about, is one of them.
That's for the example of.
Of one where.
Stopping more than continual.
Yeah, and, and just to go back on that, I think, you know, you know, our contractor's preference, you know, would have been to go 24/7. Obviously, as Larry mentioned, have the ability, there's other drills where we have, the signature majority, we've done that. The township's made it clear that, you know, to do that, we would need their approval and permission.
Did you ask them if that would be possible for that particular pullback?
Well, that's what we're here to do now.
No, no, this has happened in the spring.
Yeah.
This is the past spring, so this is already happened.
No, understood, and I'm telling you, we're asking now for the remaining drills.
So that may not be a safe pullback.
No, no, I'm saying it's not safe. It's just, it's just the optimal way to do it would be as, as certain things of a charity of experts say, the optimal way to do it is with a 24/7 pullback. So.
Okay.
And going to your other question, I think, right, so the, in terms of the answer with DEP, it's, it's undetermined. So we don't have a specific day that they have to say, or folks need to get back to us in terms of.
So we could be sitting here for two, three years?
I mean, I'll keep you answered on that one, 'cause I'm filing the reports with DEP next week. Got it right now, and filing, it's being reviewed right now for final filing. It's one of my chores to do tonight when I go to a hotel room is to read it again after my.
I stayed in one hotel.
So anyway, DEP is, uh, right now, DEP's running on about, reviewing my reports on about 65 to 75 days it takes for them to get a review. And either ask me questions, provide comments for me to respond to. I usually turn those around within five or 10 days. They usually get a re, review of my responses generally within a couple of weeks. So if you add that all up, you know, we're looking at sometime, there'll be sometime in February next year before, we will get a consent to undertake that next drill.
We will go into that pullbacks until summer, perhaps fall of next year.
Though it'd be, for a time drill out, it would be like, it would be late spring or something.
Okay. And as I said, just to be clear, I know that's on the site, but the Green Hill Room, the one at the top of the map is one where we're close in terms of a pullback. The other two, I believe Ron said, closer towards the end of the year. So the ones are green.
I didn't make it tell just by the accumulation of several pipe.
Yeah, that, what's going on there.
So, um, relative to two of the items, I noticed on your overhead and the documents that were sent us, this reference to 500 feet from the entry and exit points. Not necessarily the entire workspace areas. And as you all know, with the piping as long as it is, and a number of people here have made reference to the equipment, then there's equipment far from those entry and exit points that have to pick up and elevate that equipment. So people beyond 500 feet are gonna be impacted. So what I would like to make a request right now to you and to them is that the 500 feet be stripped from your documents because they have truly no relevance for those people who have to deal with your side lifts and other equipment as the pipe is elevated to be pulled.
Yeah, and to that point, it'd be clear, if the township requested, as you look at the 500 feet from anywhere where there's activity, you mentioned side lifts, things of that, we would certainly do that.
So then should be more people perhaps need that computation. Okay, and I guess, um, having been involved for two days on this tool pull is something new to me, and I think new to a lot of people. And it's really never been presented, to my knowledge, at any prior presentation. And Joe, you and I have been at a lot of these together. So, um, is the whole concept of these tool pulls also something to go ahead and move things along faster? Because for you who are not on the pipeline.
It's not a max, it's just your speed.
Let me, speed, speed, thank you, that's a good, good bit of phrasing. There's a lot of people who do not have agreements, who do not realize. Come next May, Sunoco is on the hook for additional payments to everyone who has an agreement because the agreements become pretty much null and void after 36 months. And thanks to Rick and others sending us emails, we have it, you know, etched in the internet, I guess there you can say, when the project started, okay? And we've had our conversations with people in Texas who've come here to be with us. So, uh, so I say to you, I think your tool pulls are a way to speed the project along and perhaps sidestep safety so that, once again, you're sidestepping also compensation to people once you exceed 30 first or thereabouts. And not, not only not have the pipe in the ground operating, but everything restored. Relative to Sunoco and our community, I hope somebody even said words, and was it something that would?
Um, good evening, my name is Maria O'Hara, I live 1605 Bainway, Tony is one of my neighbors. I've never attended your meetings, although I do read your literature for different reasons, and. And this is a sham. That's all I can say. It is a total, total sham. You have, if we give you this, we don't have a leg to stand on and you will take advantage of this, as has everything. I suffered through chemo and had to suffer through your, my walls shaking from your drilling. And it's not fair that we will have to do this on a 24/7 basis so we can get done in enough time so that your profits will be great. This is ridiculous. And no compensation has been given to the township, no taxes are paid by any of these workers. Most of us who don't live on that line, although we're affected, are not compensated. Money can't buy all of us anyway. And if God forbid, something will happen, what prevents this from not being the same as the refinery down in Philadelphia? You could just call bankruptcy and walk away and we are left with a mess, a total mess. This is, this has been a waste of time, a waste of paper. I did your survey. This should never even have been brought up at all. Thank you.
Lex Patel, 611 South Speaker Lane. Good evening, Marty. So first of all, it's just, that's a hard one to follow. I do want to concur, I will agree on one thing tonight, Joe, that I think we're all suffering from fatigue. I was here three years ago and I remember when the guy knocked on my door and said, "You don't even know it's here, here's $1,500." After I threw him out, now we're here three years later and it's still not done. I'd also like to thank Representative Cametta for caring to be here. I don't see Senator Killian, but they really let him know that he gets out of the meeting because this is really our community here. So I just, there's a couple of things. I have coffee on my back porch. Oh, I did want to thank you for one other thing. So I now only have one porta potty out back instead of two. I used to have one with Lex and Mary, my wife, but now there's only a Lex out there. So I thank you for that because now my vision is just one tractor instead of two. So there's a positive. I'm not a pipeline guy, I'm not an elected official. I come from the business world, right? So what I've been kind of weaved on over my career, I've lived here for 29 years for the record, raised a family and four children. I've been weaved on, in your job, when you do your job right, you get compensated and you move on, right? And if you don't do your job right, then there is an opportunity for corrective measures, right? I've done it, right? I've started three companies, I've worked for FedEx, I've worked with GD. And when there are repetitive problems that don't get mitigated or remedied, then there's a thing called a performance improvement plan. A PIP plan pretty much means, if you don't fix it this time around, you've got to go. I don't know when a PIP plan would work here. It doesn't appear that because there always seems to be, well, we didn't plan on that, we didn't think that would happen, trust us, this is okay and we'll get it done right. So I'm flabbergasted. I'd have been fired 28 years ago if I had used time, this kind of track record, the way you all perform your duties here. And one final thing, I'm 500 feet, I live right across from New Kent there. We got a letter from a doctor, someone so from Arizona. I would implore the board of supervisors to put a match to that and bring in a third party to ask the fox to watch the hen house about how safe this is with a PhD who signs off on something is incredulous to me. So if you all, and there's probably money somewhere in the budget, get a third party in here. Get them to come in here and tell us that it's safe, it's a better alternative and that's that. But to have a doctor, someone so from Arizona State, that was an insult. Done.
Actually, that gentleman kind of stole my thunder. My name is Patheen, and this is my...
Hi, Patheen.
We live at 530 Beaumont Circle. And I've known Joe since high school. We live down the street from Everett. And what has stole my thunder about this, we actually had a really nice view of a porta potty too, at one point. In fact, we had a fence in front of the porta potty and there's about two feet of the fence that went over the line into the workspace space. And Sunoco took that down. So we had a beautiful view for quite some time of a porta potty in our backyard as well. We really miss that since the little, the tarp has gone off. Anyway, my wife and I live with our four kids, all under 10, and our dog in Bowtree. And we were originally told about this in 2015. It's 2019 now. My seven-year-old doesn't remember his backyard without Sunoco in the backyard. It's absolutely amazing. So I think we have a couple of questions here. You know, here are our three-year-olds later and some of the other folks have said, you know, we were told that this whole entire project would take about three months to tow it out. And here we are, three years later. We have a couple of questions here. My first question, I'll ask and then we're going to get to that one. She's going to ask you guys a couple of questions as well. But the first one is, you know, in terms of, I'm a PhD economist, and my question's about the compensation that you're offering. So let me ask you guys. Joe, Larry, Ron, if I offered you $129 to leave your house tonight, would you take it? Honestly?
I mean, Pat, in terms of...
It's insulting.
It's in terms of what we've done in other areas. You know, it's based on, if there is, you know, how's the house? I mean, your circumstances that you get in terms of compensation, you have kids, you have a dog, and it's a tough decision. And I understand the point that you're trying to make, but ultimately, that's a decision, you know, if we were to move forward for you, your family, and anybody else that's in the same circumstance.
I mean, Sunoco's a for-profit entity. I get it, you guys are out of for-profit, so nothing wrong with that. I'm an economist again. I also work in the risk management industry. Before I turn her back for her question, my question is, you know, we talked just a little bit about risk management. And it sounds like there's a risk with this project. You guys directly said that. You mentioned, you've been a part of a dual pool before, right? I heard you say that, the gentleman in the middle. Dual pools in as, my question is, have you ever been involved in a dual pool in an area as densely populated as this area? And again, I worked in risk management, I think that's part of the risk management aspect.
I'm done. You ever seen Pickers, an easement ship channel?
Can you tell me exactly the location? Because I want to look it up.
Pasadena, Texas.
Where in Texas?
Pasadena, Texas, myself.
And since densely populated as this area?
More densely populated than it is here.
No issues?
I'm sorry?
How long did it take you?
To pull the pipe, but...
Entirely in the project?
Oh, the entirety of the project. It was a year and a half project because it was nearly 500 miles long.
He's basically quicker.
We laid through Pasadena. We laid in an existing quarter, kind of like this, except Pasadena has been in existence, kind of like this area, I suppose. I mean, refineries were there before war, too. My grandfather actually built one of the refineries at one of these, very far away. We laid, we laid that pipeline, we did a dual pool because of exactly the same reason we did here. So densely congested, there's no space to work. We put the pipe, those two pipelines in under eight other pipelines that were already in an existing easement. It's approximately 5,000 foot long. We had to cross Highway 225. When we're in a residential neighborhood on the south side of Highway 225, we're in an industrial complex on the north side of 225.
So can we get on the record that we can get the population figures for this exact area relative to ours? Just a comparative and make sure they actually had done this in the past, you know, as densely populated areas.
And Pat, just the one in fairness that I mentioned, when you're looking at the ones that I referenced...
Because we're trusting what Larry's saying.
I mean, you asked, I'll just give you an example, yes.
And I'm assuming your answer is accurate.
So, and if I can jump in?
Yeah.
So the one I referenced, so that's Delaware County, Gloucester County, Philadelphia. So...
That would be Harris County, Texas.
Was it dual pool, Joe?
Yeah.
It's a dual pool, yeah.
Okay.
So, I'll be brief. I just, I want to, actually, I'm going to talk to the town chief. I want to plead with you, please do not approve this. We have four kids, I know there's a lot of young families in Bowtree. I cannot imagine getting homework done in the evenings, getting my kids sufficient sleep to be able to function properly in school. And the other option is what, move to a hotel indefinitely? Does the township have any, if that were to happen, does the township have a plan for busing these kids back and forth to school for me sometimes?
No, we have no control in this school district.
So there's a lot of, I know, and I think people are forgetting that, you know, there's a lot, this doesn't just affect us and inconvenience us on the way to our jobs or work, does a lot of younger, there's a younger generation here as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that $129 will cover that. All right. That's all right.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Kathy Banana. I live at 1606 Hurley Lane. How you doing, Marty? Nice to see you. What this young couple just said really hit home for me. We moved to Chester County in 1976. We moved to Bowtree in 1986. So I've been, raised my kids, we've watched things grow, it's all been great. But you know what just struck me about that comment? I have memories. We have memories of people that lived here. That young family with a seven-year-old, where's their memories going to be? Noise, they can't get homework done? This is, I'd really like to understand how we got here. We've been working on this for three years, we can't get answers. And where's the value for the residents? Where's the value for this great township that everybody has worked so hard to be part of? So that's the only comment I have. I would ask that you guys listen to our voices and we'd appreciate your support in not supporting this. Thank you very much for your time.
Hi, my name is Sheila Johnson. I'm at 1502 Bond Steen Drive, Blue Road, the Enterprise Road entrance and exit for the project. And I just want to have two comments, really. What is the, you know, as one of the gentlemen said, the doctor who gave the comment and the letter provided by Sunoco Energy Transfer is, that's their person speaking. And even he said, it's not that they couldn't put the pipe in, it's that they couldn't put the pipe in safely at the distances that they chose. And those decisions were made before, well before this project started. We're all talking about three years. This project's been on Sunoco's docket for how many years? Think about that. Okay? So I would hope that we're not pushovers, that they planned that we were five years ago, six years ago. Thank you.
Frank Morgan, 1704 Clock Tower Drive. I think I'm the first speaker who is outside of 500 feet. I tried to enter first. My concern is, you said it's a dangerous precedent if you grant Sunoco what they're asking for. Regardless, we're pulling no waiver, I'm pulling the suspension or the enforcement of a township ordinance. Township ordinances are for the benefit of all the residents of East Coast Township. And if one of our neighbors or friends is suffering, they're uncomfortable with this, then the township should reject this request. The mitigation that they're seeking of risk is their risk, okay? Not our risk, as does the township. And while I saw the suggestion of a fine, daily fine or weekly fine, Sunoco's making so much money that you couldn't put a penalty high enough to make it worth their while not take as long as they care to. I think that they haven't been forthright throughout this project. And the last thing I'll say is, we've got Sunoco now, there are other pipelines, I certainly hope that this board of supervisors is prepared for the next time one of these companies comes into the township and wants to start a project initiative that Sunoco asks. Thank you.
Hi, the name of my name is 15 Mary Bell Drive. First of all, I have been going to meetings for like four and a half, five years, and the township have think, there's nothing we can do, there's nothing we can do. Well, now you can. You finally have some way of stopping them, and this is not right, it's not fair, and you've got them to your duty. You have to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of East Coast. And how dare Sunoco ask us to trust them and ask for a favor when they have done nothing for us? Thank you.
Bishop, this would be a good time because I think the 500 people have pretty much finished. Let's take a, you have one more?
Yes.
Okay. And then after you, we will have a five-minute break, okay?
My name is Ben Shadik. I live at 807 Brexton Drive, New Kent Apartments. I've been dealing with this for three years now. The construction's right off my deck. Every day, we got to put up with dust, noise. Unfortunately, I work at nighttime. I go to work at 10 o'clock at night, come home at 7 o'clock in the morning, and I have to deal with that question all day long. Okay? You want to do it 24/7 and disrupt everybody, okay? And you talk about compensation. Who's compensating who here? Sunoco is taking this and shipping it out of the country. Who's profiting? Us Americans? Or Sunoco lining their pockets? What benefit does it have to us as a consumer that buys your product? I don't, I don't buy your product because I think it stinks. Just like what's going to happen when that pipeline blows up? What guarantee you want, me, my girlfriend, all these people sitting here, that their lives are going to be safe? Where's it coming from? We haven't heard nothing about safety. All she can turn about is putting this pipe in the ground. I haven't been compensated. I've heard people been compensated money-wise. I live in an apartment. Have you compensated Hankin Group? They keep on charging me the same rent and mom. Matter of fact, now I got to pay my water bill. So if you want to compensate somebody, let us know up front. Because Hankin don't care. Oh, there's nothing we can do. What's a compensation? You know, I've heard $1,500 and all that. I've heard $30,000 from people in Bowtree. Is that true?
So in terms of compensation, obviously, the conversation today is about the 24/7 drilling. For folks that live in New Kent, I don't know specifically where you are, but I presume you're right there.
I'm right there, right there. I look at the green curtain every morning.
So, you know, what we're talking about is a compensation for the 24/7 drilling that we have laid out in terms of the lodging expenses based on the local rate as well as the property. In terms of with the Hankin Group and who owns the property, you know, that's a, I'm not going to get into kind of individual conversations in terms of that piece and the easement that Hankin Group signed. What they, you know, and then in the same way, in terms of what your rent and everything that you pay in terms of apartment, you know, that's obviously between you and the Hankin Group. But bringing it back to today and what we're talking about, whether or not, not whether or not the project proceeds, but the 24/7 piece. And we're hearing from everybody with their opinions as well as yours. And with that, the question is, the compensation that would come with that, that we found on the ground.
Well, the other thing is, is you're just going to put it in anyhow. We can't stop this because the corporations in this country just do as they please. They don't care about the American people and their health. Thank you.
First, we're going to have a five-minute break and then we'll come back and... We're going to have a five-minute break and then we'll come back and we'll listen to the other East Coast people. We're going to stop public comment at 9 o'clock so that we can, so we'll be able to make a motion and come up to a decision this evening.